Wow.
Okay, good morning and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, November 26th. I am your Chair, Sean Flowerday. With me is Vice Chair Rick Vest, along with Commissioners Matt Schulte, Roma Amundson, and Krista Yocum. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please begin.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located at the wall of the rear of the hearing room. All written materials to be discussed at today's meeting can be viewed at the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Printing options are available upon request. Brings us to Item 1 Minutes, approval of the minutes the Board of Commissioners meeting held in November 19th, 2024.
I move approval of the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 2 Claims, 2A, approval of the claims processed through November 22nd, 2024.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 2B, approval of a claim to El Centro de las Americas in the amount of $12,243.53.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Abstain.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 2C, approval of claims, including billings for goods and services beyond the 90-day time period provided in Nebraska Vice Statute 23-135 for Convention, Sports, and Leisure International LLC dated November 25th, 2024 for a total of $174,200.
I move approval.
Second.
And Dennis, just, it's my understanding this is just past the 90 days. There's no other issues with this?
Yeah, I mean, and this one, we've been, we've been trying to get kind of cleaned up. We kind of got behind a little bit. This piece here is just for the fee piece. We're also working on some of their expenses side of things. So I would assume within next week or the following week, there will probably be another one to clean up the expenses, but we're just trying to clean everything up.
Appreciate it.
It is a big dollar amount. Related to what? What is this?
So this one is related to the Convention Center.
Yeah, these are, this is, this is the group that is doing like, these are the consultants we hired to walk us through the whole process. So, yeah, site designs, structural, it's not really structural engineering yet, but it is the-
Conceptual engineering.
Right, thank you, yes, yes.
And it's for, it's for fees for them, and then they're also working with a group-
Populus.
Yeah, Populus. So it's a few months' worth of stuff that we're, that we're just trying to get caught up on, and, and that's why the 90 days kind of came into effect.
Appreciate it. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to Item 3 Consent Items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a Commissioner, by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there is an exception, these items will be approved as one single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are the approval of A, amendments to the following county contracts, C-21-0323 with Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services, for the Lancaster County Youth Services Center to provide detention to services to juveniles committed or placed with DHHS, C-19-0884 with Cone Incorporated to provide elevator and escalator service, maintenance, and testing, B, change order 1 to county contract C-24-0465 with Lobato Construction LLC for the use of a soil setup, change order 2 to county contract C-24-0088 with Van Dorn Valley Construction LLC to add disincentive cost, D, grant contract with Everybody Gets a Chance for the Everybody Gets a Chance program in the amount of $10,000, E, several work contracts with the following, the Clyde Malone Community Center for the Youth Advisory Council Program in the amount not to exceed $80,000, and Clyde Malone Community Center for the Education Advocate Program in the amount not to exceed $58,798, and F, setting a public hearing on Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024 at 9:00 a.m. in Room 112 of the county city building, 555 South 10th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska regarding the issuance of the county of its revenue refunding bonds in one or more series that benefit the Tabitha Intergen LLC in affiliate of Tabitha Incorporated pursuant to Section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended.
Move approval of the consent items.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to Item 4 New Business, 4A, a resolution in the matter authorizing the installation of traffic control devices on Northwest 40th Street and West Holdred Street in Lancaster County.
Good morning. John Barry, Lancaster County Engineering. I would like to introduce Will Turman. He's one of our engineers. He specifically does a lot of our road design. He also takes care of a lot of our traffic questions and/or stop signs, signage, that kind of things. This particular item was complaint-driven. Some of the Jason property owners were having issues. Again, I'm sorry, this is near Northwest High School. So traffic has increased primarily on these roadways. Some of the property owners have been concerned about people not, not either slowing down or not making the turn. So they've actually been driving into their yards to the north side. So it's kind of an issue. But Will can talk a little bit about the process that he uses to determine what, what is actually needed here, and then also answer any of your questions if you have. So, Will.
Yeah, so at this intersection, one of the major issues that I think people are not stopping, so they don't have a proper sight distance, so they are not able to see basically the end of the intersection, especially when it gets dark. So the graph on the top is the profile of the road, basically, and then this blue line right here is the driver's eyesight. So drivers go, because the road is 50 miles an hour, so to be able to stop on a 50 mile an hour roadway, it takes up 425 feet, and 425 feet away from basically the end of that intersection, you can't see. So people aren't being able to see that there is no road going north. It's a T-intersection. So we propose that we put a stop sign there so people know, hey, we have to make a full stop. And then we'll also put a stop ahead sign because we do have those sight distance issues.
What's the north-south there? What's that road? I can't see it. You're just-
Sorry, yeah, this is Northwest 40th Street, and this is West Holdred. So north, was it west? High School is about half a mile to the west.
I have a question about that. I, because this is east of Northwest 48th Street. Where are people coming and going from? I mean, there's not a lot of housing there. I'm just curious. I'm all for the safety of it, but I'm just curious.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So, you know, the new high school and the increased residential development in the area, people have a tendency to use our county roads kind of as cut-throughs, right? That's your quick cut-around, whether it be traffic signals or other intersections. The challenge with this particular road is, this is a section that's still dirt. It actually, this intersection is actually a proposed annexation by the City of Lincoln. However, that being said, we felt we should come forward and put up the stop sign anyway, once we had studied it. And just a quick note about the studies that, that Will does. So Will is EIT, Engineer in Training. You may or may not realize you have to practice engineering for four years before you can, can get your engineering license. And so all of Will's work is done under the supervision of one of our six licensed engineers, and all of his work is in conformance with the, right, Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. So.
I do appreciate the, the safety aspect of it. I was just curious as to the amount of traffic. I would move approval.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any-
That was going to be my question, is this is the area where there's potential annexation? Is, do we know, like, has that actually come to planning yet? I've had, I've had conversation from one of the neighbors who called me about it. That's why I wasn't sure.
We, we know it's in process, but we don't always know exactly when it's going to happen because it's based on final plats and developers. And, you know, since the, since the clerk's office and the assessor are both in the room, you might find it interesting that a lot of times developers will go ahead and file their documents all at the very end of the year so that they don't have to do partial taxes. And sometimes, depending on what they're doing, they might wait a little bit. So it all kind of depends on what, what they have in mind. Here's the real thing. Everyone who lives in the City of Lincoln is also a Lancaster County resident. It is Lancaster County right now. This is $200 worth of signs.
Yep.
This is just a decision we need to make.
Yeah.
Commissioner Schulte, just to reiterate what Pam said, Planning, Planning Board is working on an annexation agreement. You know, exactly when that's going to go to the board, we don't know, but they are currently working on that.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to 4B, Resolution in the Matter of Instituting Eminent Domain Proceedings on Project 22-42 Bridge Replacement S059 Track 2 Located at South 46th Street and Brandon Boulevard, Lancaster County, Nebraska.
Dalton Rightaway, manager. Jim Jurgens, writer agent. Yep, I was just coming before you to continue condemnation for S59, Track 2.
And this is the resolution that we mentioned last week on Thursday.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Just real briefly, give a capsulization of what we're doing here, why we're going with eminent domain. It's not something the Board does lightly, but there are times when we need to take this step.
Yeah, so this is for a bridge replacement of S59 in a- This is for a bridge replacement of S59 right here. We've met with the landowner close to 16 to 17 times, trying to come to an agreement, and the landowner has made mention that he's gone to condemnation before and he's willing to do it again. We failed to come to an agreement, and we feel that it's time to move forward with the condemnation proceedings.
Essentially, he wants $45,000 for essentially what's wasteland, so.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest? Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 4C-
Appreciate it.
4C, a utility easement for infrastructure granted to Lincoln Electric System, a property in Lancaster County. The county will receive $5,350 for a permanent easement.
And we need a motion or someone to talk?
Dalton Rightaway, manager. This is LES requesting easement from us to do a switch gearbox on Sawtillow in conjunction with our Sawtillow Road Improvement Project.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 4D, an agreement with Manelli Wagner and Associates Incorporated for professional engineering services required for the inspection of the following 12 fragile critical bridges, B230, C220, C224, C262, F224, H83, H120, M170, R15, T177, T230, and V90 in Lancaster County. The cost of the county shall not exceed $18,280.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So fracture critical bridge inspections are something that NDOT used to do through an agreement with us, and they would just do an agreement to inspect all the fracture critical bridges in the state. They've made the decision that counties should be responsible for inspecting fracture critical bridges on their own. We don't have the equipment to get under all of these bridges, and in some cases, we don't have the expertise to inspect all these locations. And so this is a contract to do fracture critical bridge inspection for our 2025 fracture critical bridges. And just to remind everyone, a fracture critical bridge is a bridge that if some, if some part of it would fracture, it could fail suddenly and dramatically.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 4E, a memorandum of understanding with Murphy Tractor and Equipment Co. Incorporated for the annual rental of heavy equipment and attachments. The cost of accounting for equipment during the initial term shall not exceed $133,750.
Morning Commissioners. This is for some wheel loaders that we're looking to, oh, Brian Shaw, Lancaster County. Apologize. Looking to purchase some, or in purchase, some, lease some wheel loaders from Murphy Equipment. Help with our salt. We've got some aging wheel loaders, so that's what this one's for.
Okay.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 4F, recommendation from the purchasing agent on behalf of the county engineer to order a contract to Midwest Petroleum Equipment for fuel and fluid dispensing and management system service for the amount of $56,774.36.
Ryan Shaw, Lancaster County Engineering, Fleet and Facilities Manager. This is to put some new pedestals out in our four hub shops, Waverly, Roca, Sprague, and Raymond. This is going to eliminate some paperwork for us. Right now, we're currently taking paper logs of anything that we've dispensed out of those dispensers. Also, with the Sheriff's Department, we're looking at getting some equipment to mount on their car that'll go for wireless. So all they have to do is pull up, it'll automatically register the car, the mileage, the hours, and it'll log that for us.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 4G, memorandum of understanding with the Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice regarding the Youth Services Center's use and dissemination of Nebraska Criminal Justice Information System in Sejus information.
Good morning Commissioners. Brad Alexander, Director of the Lancaster County Youth Services Center. This is just a, I would refer to it maybe as a boilerplate contract. It's just, and we needed to get it cleaned up. It hadn't been renewed since 2020, so it's had people listed as administrators that are no longer employed, so.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 4H, agreement with the Occupational Health Centers, Nebraska PC, and Concentra Health Services Incorporated, doing business as CMCA, to deduct pre-employment and return-to-work physical examinations and screenings of current and potential employees of the county. The cost of the county shall not exceed $15,000 during the first year.
Good morning Commissioners. Laura Levkey from Human Resources, and this is to replace Company Care, who was our provider for all of these physical services. They announced their closure in August, so we did our due diligence and explored five other options. And this Concentra was the only provider that can meet all of the protocols for all of our agencies, have kept all of the agencies aware of those updates. We had a training last week on the new portal where they can authorize services, and excited to move forward with it, so.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I guess I have, you just have a question. Concentra, do they have multiple locations in town, or is it just the one kind of up on-
Just one, like 27th and Superior. Yep, but then two locations in Omaha that we have utilized partially for some individuals that are in Omaha coming here for employment, so.
Okay.
Yep, just the one.
Okay.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 4I, agreement with the Embassy Suites to host Lancaster County's annual taxing sale, March 3rd, 2025. The cost of the county is $3,750.
Rachel Gogger, Lancaster County Treasurer. This is to house our annual tax sale, and because we can't hold it here. Our office isn't big enough to hold everybody that comes. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
We've used Embassy Suites in the past, right?
Yes. We've, I think this will be our fourth year. Yes, and they are great. It's been one of the best places that we have, and I'm told that from people that have been doing it for years.
I move approval. Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 4J, settlement agreement and general lease with Lancaster County and Amy McGinnis, effective November 26th, 2024.
Motion?
I would move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 5 Public Comment. Members of the public wishing to speak that items relating to county business are not on the agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to one appearance of up to five minutes. That time may not be reserved, transferred, or otherwise assigned to other speakers. These time limits may be extended or reasonably decreased at the discretion of the Chair.
Robert Boer. Our great Declaration of Independence states that governments are instituted among men for the explicit purpose of securing certain unalienable rights endowed by our Creator. Our state constitution, Article 1, Section 1, affirms that the primary role of all those in government who take an oath is to protect the God-given, inherent, and inalienable rights of the people from being denied or infringed by others in government, quoting, "And these rights shall not be denied or infringed by the state or any subdivision thereof." Again, "And these rights shall not be denied or infringed by the state or any subdivision thereof." Not only are the various branches of government supposed to serve as checks and balances on each other, but the various levels of government are supposed to do the same. When the state overreaches and denies or infringes upon the rights of the people, those who take an oath at the local county level are supposed to step in. The whole purpose of local government is to make government on the whole more responsive and accountable to the voice and rights of the people. It stands to reason, then, that the oath of office at the local county level is very important, and only really finds meaning when the rights of the people are being denied and infringed. It is only at those times that we really find out what those who take that oath, such as yourselves, are really made out of. Let's do a reality check with two simple questions. What happened during the local and state-sponsored COVID tyranny? I'll tell you. We found rank cowardice among all those who took an oath. What continues to happen in response to the tyranny of non-transparency and non-verifiability in the people's all-important elections? The same. We find rank cowardice among all those who took an oath. As far as can be seen right now, nearly every branch and level of government has replaced their responsibility to protect the rights of the people with protecting themselves. That includes this board. You don't protect any of the people's rights. By and large, all you do is take money from one party and give it to another, granted sometimes for the public good, but at other times for the good of special interests. But when it comes to upholding your oath in the face of tyranny, you take a knee and totally bow out. I just happen to have a copy right here of each of your oaths. Let's take a look. I got, I got Matt Schulte, I got Rick Vest, here's your oath, I got Sean Flowerday, I got Roma, and I got Krista, and I got Todd Wilgen, and Terry Wagner, and Pat Condon besides. Reading a portion of that oath, I do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Nebraska against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or for purpose of evasion, et cetera. It is obvious that taking this oath doesn't necessarily mean anything. A person can give lip service and harbor cowardice and/or treason in their hearts. A person can give aid and comfort to tyranny out of weakness or out of intent. Either way, it is treason. I'm betting I could get, I could get two witnesses up here to testify that aid and comfort have been and are being given- that aid and comfort have been and are being given to tyranny. For now, until someone is willing to prosecute, these oaths are literally worthless. So, I am tearing them up.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Good morning. Wanted to talk a little bit about accountability. What are you doing to make sure that we're accountable? Are elections the ones that determine who gets into office? Are they accurate? My concern is that we're coming now to certification time. You know, if I was a person that needed to certify it, I would be very questionable whether I would certify it. Just because there's so many things that go on behind the scenes and we don't have information to really identify that the voting was accurate. We have one person, two people, you know, offices that say, yeah, everything is accurate and exactly the way it should be. But I question that because we don't have any information to find out what is actually going on. Where's the cast vote record that identifies, you know, the election process, where the ballots are being counted? We don't get it. What about the images of the ballots themselves? According to the website, that should be a public access of that based upon the manufacturer. So, there's certain things that we're not getting at all. We need to have information to be able to look and see what is actually going on. Back to accountability. Are we being accountable for what's going on? That's why we elected you, is to be accountable. My concern is that we've also got areas where I think we need to change the whole process. We need to get rid of the machines and go back to hand-counting. What's more accurate than that? And they always say, well, it's going to cost you more. I would really question that. When you have the Secretary of State spending $5 million for, I think, four years for voting equipment, that is not cheap. Hand-counting, what would that really cost? And they say, well, it's going to take too long. No, it does not take too long. They used to do it that way with hand-counting. But I think we have a lot of things that are going on that we have our heads in the sand, not really seeing what's going on. We need to make a change. We need to make change that where it's accountable, we know exactly what, who is elected for the offices. If you look at the ballots, the way they went through this last time, I mean, sure, the president went through and was elected, but what about the other offices down below? The lower-level offices that went on? Is this really a true and accurate count? Need you to stand up. You were elected to stand up and help. Let's find out what's really going on. Be accountable. Let's have the truth. The truth is what's going to help us. Thank you.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Okay, seeing no other members of the public wishing to speak, we can move on to announcements.
Announcements. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will not hold a staff meeting on Thursday, November 28th, 2024. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024, at 9:00 a.m. The Board of Equalization immediately following in Room 112 of the County City Building. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447 or commish@lancaster NE.gov. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on LKTV. LKTV is available on Allo Channel 2 and Spectrum Channel 1300. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit Lincoln NE.gov. LKTV apps are available on Roku, Apple TV, Amazon Fire TV. Last item is adjournment.
Move the adjourn.
Second.
Motion in a second to adjourn. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Ammison?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.